Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Finance meeting. This is going to be somewhat interesting experience, but we'll call a meeting order at 7:05 PM.
Just a test, Michael, can you hear me? Just want to know if I can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we just have, if you want to join in, the best thing to do is to mute your device. And then you can just hit the spacebar on your laptop or whatever when you're ready to speak. But otherwise, you'll be muted. So you can mute yourself there. To ask a question, you can either raise your hand or tap in or you can click the chat and type a question, and we'll have those there. And Crystal will let me know if there are questions that need to be answered. And other than that, we're going to proceed and hope all goes well. All right, so the first thing we're going to do is call roll. Dave, you want me to do that?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Forton.
Present.
Mr. Bernardi.
Here.
Mr. Bradrick.
Here.
Mr. Chamora.
Present.
Mr. Kelleher.
Here.
Mrs. Waz.
Here.
Mrs. Cutler.
Here.
Mr. Sheen.
I'm here.
And myself, Michael Doherty, the chair. All right, so we have a full board. There's no need for item number three, which would be the seated alternate. So the next order of business would be to approve the meeting minutes from March 3rd.
March 10.
March 10.
I'll move. Motion to approve.
You went at the wrong one.
Yeah. I got it, I got it. All right, so we need to approve the minutes from March 10. Do I have a motion from anyone to approve the minutes?
So move.
Okay, we have Mr. Bernardi.
They need to say their name each time they speak.
As you speak, you need to give your name. So that was Mr. Bernardi. Move to accept the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second, Fred Chamora.
And Fred Chamora seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll need to vote again. By name, Mr. Forton.
I move to approve.
Mr. Bernardi.
Prove.
Mr. Chamora.
Hi.
Kelleher.
Aye.
And myself, I also vote aye. So motion carries. All right. The next order of business is under public access. And the people were given the opportunity to make comments to the board through the town website that we could review on this process. And unfortunately, we only received six comments. All basically say the same thing. Five of them were related to not raising the mill rate or increasing the budget without a public hearing. And the sixth one was regarding the Stentman Fund. And that is all the communications that we have received up until this point, as far as that goes. The general public had the access to all the documents via the town website. And they were also had copies of the budget printed up and left out front for people to pick up if they so choose. Karen, did we have anybody pick up any that you know?
I am Karen Fitzpatrick, Treasurer. No, I have not been asked. I'm not sure if people did come and just pick them up. I didn't count today to see how many were there. But I did only put out 25 of each, and it didn't look like many were gone. So I don't think there was a high population of people coming in getting those.
Michael. Michael.
Go ahead.
If I could interrupt you for a minute. Is our minute taker going to get a recording of this? Or is she present?
She is present, and I will send her the link to this meeting tomorrow so she can watch the entire recording.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. That takes care of item number five. Now we'll go into new business. First item, A, new business, is use of the contingency funds for emergency renovations to the town hall. What that entails is they're looking to put some type of security glass, probably plexiglass, into the windows as you enter the town hall. One on either side, one for the tax collector's office, and one for the town clerk's office. And that would be as far as people would be allowed to go. This way here, people could come in and pay their taxes or pick up dog licenses, whatever else they had to do. Basically, it would be like your local convenience store or grocery stores where there's a plastic shield between you and the customer. So they are looking for permission to use, at this time, Karen, $5,000.
Yes, Karen Fitzpatrick, Treasurer. Yes, $5,000.
Yes, you may adjourn.
Hi, Jay Swan, First Selectmen. Here is an estimate for town hall renovations. What pushed us to the edge, if you will, is this COVID-19 situation. The town hall is closed. We're still providing services to all of the citizens of town. There's always been a concern about the safety and security at the town hall, but also because of this COVID-19. As you enter the town hall now, putting in service windows on the left for the tax collector and on the right for the town clerk. On the left, it would be similar to when you go inside to the bank. You have glass. You have an area that you can slide your deposit underneath. It'd be the same thing for the tax collector. For the town clerk, the majority of business in her office is for dog licenses, permits for the transfer station, and marriage licenses. Those also can be done at a service window, if you will. So their offices could remain locked, but still, they have the security of being behind glass. We did call fees. Our building inspector did an estimate. And we came up with moving the double doors back into the lobby, building sidewalls to accept them is $23,000. Augment the tax collector's door to create a service window would be $1,268. Glass for both service windows, $400. Paint, $500. Electric, $500. In the total, it'd be about $5,000.
Thoughts on that, anyone?
So Jay, this is Jeff Kelleher asking. Would you estimate that $5,000 will be the total needed or up to $5,000?
I believe it would be $5,000. I think the total of the estimate, if you will, came out to $4,998.
Okay.
Beyond that, as we get into it, as any of us know, once you start a project at home, many times you get into it and it's a little bit more than you expected. Tonight, we expect that this is correct. But again, you may run into some issues. We just don't know.
Sure.
Anyone else? Right?
What is the name of their outline?
They're the ones speaking.
All right, if no one has anything else to add, I would entertain a motion to allow the town to spend up to $5,000 from the contingency fund for the emergency renovations due to COVID-19.
This is David Forton. I would make a motion that we allow the Board of Selectmen to spend up to $5,000. The, I'm sorry, Mike, can you forgive me here? Why are you big around here? The request for the walk-up windows in the town hall. Does that work?
Yeah. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Bradrick, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Forton, how do you vote?
Yay.
Yay.
Mr. Bernardi.
Yay.
Mr. Bradrick.
Yay.
Mr. Chamora.
Yay.
Mr. Kelleher.
I vote in favor.
And myself, I also vote in favor, Mr. Doherty. Now, it has to be recorded. No, it can be recorded. But I have to, we have to make sure we have the name. Okay. That takes care of that. All right, next item of business is the tax collector's suspense list. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I would move to approve. David Forton.
All right, Mr. Forton moves to approve. Do we have a second?
Bernardi, second.
Mr. Bernardi, seconds. Any discussion? I know that Karen sent out all the information there. It's pretty straightforward. Basically, it's years past. Even though we are suspending these payments at this time, it is just to approve that, but there's still the opportunity to collect. And if you look at the updated revenue sheets, you'll find that there's been quite a bit collected just this past year in taxes that were in arrears. So there is the possibility that not all of this is just written off. Any questions?
I have the tax collector sitting next to me if anybody has any questions.
If anybody has any questions. Thank you for passing the window, by the way.
Okay. All right, if we have no other comments or questions on the taxpayers' list, do we have a motion to approve?
Bernardi, so move.
Mr. Bernardi moves for approval.
I'll second. David Forton.
Mr. Forton, seconds. Mr. Forton, how do you vote?
Yay.
Mr. Bernardi.
Yay.
Mr. Bradrick.
Yay.
Mr. Chamora.
Yay.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yay.
And Mr. Doherty also votes yay. Pass that. All right. Next order of business is the item C, the Board of Education requests for the use of Health Reserve Funds. And that is in the amount of Karen?
$100. Karen Fitzpatrick, Treasurer, $150,000.
As you know, in the past, that account was a special service account set aside for health insurance payments that weren't fully covered or to pay premiums if necessary. And those are, basically, that's what it was restricted to its use. But due to the fact that we no longer have the same setup where the Board of Ed is self-insured, they are now in with the state program. It's been a recommendation of our auditor to chew this fund down and eventually get rid of it. So this would save another $160,000 that would have to go into the school board budget if, in fact, we made that approval.
Question?
Go ahead.
Is this the total amount in that fund currently? Or is there additional funds in that account currently?
There are additional funds, yeah, Fred.
Could you give me the total of the fund currently?
Karen Fitzpatrick, Treasurer, yes, I believe there's approximately $474,000 in the cash account. And this, I just want to make a statement that this $150,000 was also in their budget request that was approved at referendum.
I'm sorry, Karen, I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
Oh, I said that the $150,000 was presented in the Board of Ed's budget for fiscal year '20, and it did pass at referendum. So it was stated that they were planning on using these reserve funds as part of the budget process.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion for approval?
Brad, motion, we approve the transfer.
Mr. Chamora moves that we approve it. Do we have a second?
Bradrick, second.
Mr. Bradrick, seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Forton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardi.
Yay.
Mr. Bradrick.
Aye.
Mr. Chamora.
Aye.
Mr. Kelleher.
Aye.
And Mr. Doherty votes aye. So that carries. All right, the next order of business would be to item D, to appoint the auditor for the year. We are currently on our last year of contract with Mahoney and Sable. Going forward, we'll have to see if we want to put out another request for bids. But we do have one year left, and this is required that we approve. Even though we have a contract that we approve this document, I sign it and we send it to the state.
This is Jeff Kelleher. I make a motion to approve the auditor, the appointment of the auditor.
All right, motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Dave Forton.
Mr. Forton, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call the vote. Mr. Forton.
Aye.
Mr. Bernardi.
Aye.
Mr. Bradrick.
Aye.
Mr. Chamora.
Aye.
Mr. Kelleher.
Aye.
And Mr. Doherty votes in favor as well. So that carries. All right, the next item, item E, is our estimated revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. Karen, would you like to address that?
Karen Fitzpatrick, Treasurer, I guess I would start by asking, does anybody have any specific questions? You received a estimated revenue sheet from me. And based on those revenues, I didn't see any drastic increases over last, over the current fiscal year. I do also speak with Linda Bernardi, our tax collector, and Judy Wahlberg, our town clerk, to get a consensus of, you know, how much more over last year do they think we'll be able to collect on, you know, certain fees as far as, you know, property taxes, current taxes, et cetera. I go by the state grants, what the state tells us they're going to give us. I know that sometimes what they say they're giving us doesn't necessarily mean that's what we will receive. However, it's black and white. Those are the numbers that I use. I look at three consecutive years when I look at other incomes such as building permit fees, zoning fees, interest earned, and so forth. And I try to take a consensus of those three years and base it on 8% to 90%. I don't see a very high interest amount this year. The interest rates from the banks in our investments have substantially dropped. We went from maybe a 1.87% down to a 0.25% in most of our accounts. I'm keeping an eye on those, but it's not really the time to be moving money around. There really isn't any better options currently. One thing I did remove this year is, over previous years, we've always considered local capital, the improvement grant, as part of our general government operational budget. Over the last, we've seen an influx of, sometimes we're going to get it, then they freeze it. We may get it, we may not get it. So my advice to the board was not to, actually to my authority when I spoke with him, was to not include most of any more in the general government budget. It's a reimbursement program that goes to our roads. If we do get the money, I suggest we reimburse our road budget and keep that out of our estimated revenue. So what I've come up with, you know, at this point, was a total of $23,879,640 in estimated revenues for fiscal year 2021.
Questions or comments?
No, I have none.
I can further add that I had the Prop 46 worksheet based on these numbers as well, showing a certain shortfall in revenue depending on what the board decides to move forward with in spending over, you know, last year. So the estimated revenues on the sheet that I gave you would not cover in full if they were to go by my Prop 46 calculations with the allowable that we can spend.
Anyone have any questions? Comments? All right, we will move on to the next item, F. All right, we need a, we need a motion to approve the revenues.
I'll move to approve the revenues as presented. This is David Forton.
All right, Mr. Forton has made a motion to approve the revenues as reported. Do we have a second?
Bernardi.
Mike Bernard, second. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Forton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardi.
Aye.
Mr. Bradrick. Mr. Bradrick.
Tell him he's muted.
Yeah, he muted.
Thank you.
I am not muted. Aye.
Mr. Chamora.
Aye.
Mr. Kelleher.
Aye.
And Mr. Doherty also votes in favor. All right, that takes care of that. Now, next item, approved fiscal year 2021 combined budgets. Based on the budgets as last presented, we have quite a shortfall. Actually, if we go to the Proposition 46 limit, which is $941,210, that would give us a budget And the revenues, as you just approved, of $23,879,640, which leaves us a shortfall of $76,987. So I will open this with discussion as to where you want to go as far as the budget.
Well, I guess I'll be, I'll be the guy who goes first. I don't think.
All right, Mr. Forton?
Yes, thank you. David Forton. Considering everything that's going on in the, in the world right now with this pandemic in our own state, when we're looking at a budget shortfall of nearly $2 billion next year, or actually, it's over $2 billion, $900 million this year, the uncertainty of what's going to happen with our education system, whether or not we'll be sending kids to school in September, and a whole host of other uncertainties, I don't feel comfortable going to the maximum of Prop 46. I will say for the record that I've gone to the, I voted to the max of Prop 46 for the last three budget cycles. This year, I can't, my conscience won't allow me to do that. I need to think about all those people in Woodstock who are underemployed, unemployed, and who have a whole host of other issues. Based on that, I have a couple of proposals, and I can hold off on those if you want. Or I can tell you that my thought, what would you prefer, Mike? You prefer me to just make a proposal?
Go ahead and put it out there right now, David.
I would suggest that we increase the budget for 2021 by 2% over the 1920 budget. And I'm sure Karen will check my math. But I think that'll bring us to $24,495,725. Before I continue, do you want to check that, Karen?
Yes, hold on, Jay. I'm sorry. Yep, Dave, can you just speak a little bit louder? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sure. Can you hear me now?
Repeat that, Dave.
I want to, I would suggest we go 2% over last year's budget. Last year's budget being $24,015,417. 2%.
What's your proposed amount?
That equates to 2% for you?
I'm checking it right now.
I knew you would, hon.
$24,495,725. That is accurate. Karen Fitzpatrick, Treasurer, Dave, that's accurate.
And if we did that, I would suggest that the split be 90% to the Board of Education. That, that sum would be $432,276. And 10% to the Board of Selectmen, which would be $48,030.
Could you repeat those dollar amounts again, Dave?
I just want to let everybody know I'm shouting. My neighbors in the condos next door are all standing out, looking out the windows. So if you could turn up your microphones, perhaps you might want to. But I was certainly sure. But I was certainly, certainly be happy to repeat those.
Okay.
All right. So which number do you want first?
What is the 90% for Board of Ed? What was that amount?
That would be, let me back up. The Board of Selectmen would be $48,030.
Thank you, Dave.
You're very welcome. That total, by the way, should come up to $483,070. And again, this is just an initial proposal for the group.
All right, anyone else?
Oh, Dave, this is Jeff Keller speaking. Dave Forton, since you've worked through these figures, do you have any estimates of how we would cover the shortfall in revenue, whether it be through a mill rate increase or tapping into our generally reserve?
When you say shortfall in revenue, Jeff, are you talking about the difference between what I'm proposing and what's been asked for at the maximum of 46?
Well, what, based on, if I'm reading the, it's sideways, so I'm struggling to read it. But what I'm reading is based on the original proposals from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed, we would have a $1,076,000 roughly shortfall in revenue, which obviously would have to come from somewhere, whether it be a mill rate increase or tapping into our reserves. Well, I was just wondering if you had gone and worked that out yet.
Well, okay, so first of all, we wouldn't be looking for a $1,076,000.
Right, right, it would be, it's reduced. I understand that.
Yes, and I do have a proposal, and I would suggest, there's a couple of different ways we can do this. We have a pretty, pretty large unreserved general fund. We've talked about this numerous times over the last several years, certainly you've been, since you've been on the board. And there's a couple of ways we could address this, and that would be a discussion that takes place tonight. One would be that if we had a .2 mil tax increase, for, as an example, I'm not necessarily proposing it, but I'm bringing it to the table, and we took $337,000 out of our unreserved general fund, we could fund this budget, and it would only be .2 mils. Now, to go a little further, over the last several budget cycles, our mill rate has only increased by .2 mils. So we'll be looking at three budget cycles with a total increase in taxation of .4 mils. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong on that. And we, there's also the option down the road, since we haven't gone to the maximum of Prop 46, that if something catastrophic was going to happen, was to happen in the school district, for example, all the anticipated special ed children actually show up at school. If we actually go back to school the way we knew it, and it was a catastrophic shortfall in funds, that the district could come back for supplemental appropriation, rather than us just going to the max of Prop 46, which is like 1.5 mils. It's, it would never fly. Question, Jeff? You're looking at me. I'm looking at you.
Well, I'm kind of looking at my screen. Well, I guess the question would be, would we be able to, would we be able to fund the entire shortfall from our reserve fund and avoid a mill increase altogether this year? Since, since our reserve fund has been, you know, we've been extending the cap on it for a long time, would this be an appropriate time to, you know, tap into it and present a zero mil increase?
We certainly could do that. That would be a $480,000 hit to the unreserved general fund. And on top of that, we still have to consider that we have the Woodstock Academy capital assessment hanging out there. That's around $218,000. So the total you'd be looking at is $700,000 hit.
That's right. I forgot about the capital assessment.
So what I was working on in my proposal here is to find something that best levels everything out. Now, I do anticipate, I think we all anticipate that there'll be revenues left over at the end of this year. And those monies would be applied to the unassigned general fund. But I can't give you what those numbers are. I'm looking at fiscal prudency here and what is reasonable. I mean, I'm sure there'll be taxpayers in the community will be upset with any tax increase, but I don't think that four tenths of one mil over a course of three fiscal years is really a strong overtaxation.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mike, Mary. I tend to agree with Mr. Forton and Mr. Keller. All of the people who I've come in contact with have been adamant that, given the current financial situation that they are forced into because of COVID-19, this is not the year.
We can't hear you, Mr. Keller.
This is not the year for any tax increase. We have a substantial amount in the undesignated reserves. And to the degree that we have to fund the shortfall, I think that's where it has to come out of. I would oppose a .2 mil tax increase. It may seem reasonable, but not to anyone who is contacted.
Anyone else?
All right, good question. We have it down as a 97.
A little bit, Mike?
Michael Bernardi, yes. A 97.5 collection rate. I know that we usually, year after year, above, over 98% increase in tax collection. Why couldn't we increase that by half a percent to 98? What would that, what would that income bring in?
Well, the thing is, Mike, when it comes to that, this is, this is a particular time where that doesn't make a lot of sense, because you're already talking, we brought it up many times before, that when times are tough, you're going to have less people paying their taxes. So if, if we expect to get closer to the 100%, the problem we're going to have is when we have another shortfall on the tax revenue. I mean, Linda does a great job. It's been fantastic for the last couple of years. But with, with all of this going on, and we don't know when it's going to end, there's no guarantees that these people are going to be able to pay the taxes that they're paying now, never mind any additional amount.
Yeah, and I would, I would, David Forton, I'd like to pipe in for a minute. Linda's done a fantastic job of wringing out the sponge. And I'd like to congratulate her on that, but as Michael said, there's a good chance that that could change this year. It is a great idea. We could certainly crank that up a half a percent. What do we do next year if it doesn't happen?
One other thing that I would like to add, the fact that Linda has done such a fantastic job bringing in taxes that were in arrears, eventually, that pool isn't going to be there any, any longer either, because she's doing such a good job. There won't be taxes in arrears. She keeps going the way she has, and we'll be right up to date with, you know, any past taxes or liens or interest on those funds. So as I say, I, if there was a time to raise the expectation on tax collection, I don't think this is it.
This is Jeff Keller again. Karen, I don't know if you happen to have these figures handy, but our undesigned reserve, what is the, do you know the dollar amount that's in it?
Karen Fitzpatrick, Treasurer, yes, it's approximately $3.9 million. One thing I would like to point out for the record when we're speaking about revenues is, if we decided not to go to the allowable and go with Dave's figures of a combined budget of $24,495,725, that would actually leave a shortfall of $616,850 that would need to come from the general fund. Now, any surplus that we get in this current fiscal year has already been calculated in the estimated revenues and is committed towards next fiscal year. So we would still need $616,850 to fund this budget.
And does, does that include the Woodstock Academy assessment, or are we not?
No, no, we don't have that included in here.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Charlene Cubler. Correct me if I'm wrong, but do I recall hearing that Woodstock's tax rate is among the lowest in the state?
Karen Fitzpatrick, Treasurer, yes. Actually, we are one in three of the entire state of Connecticut's lowest mil rates. We've been consecutive over the last, what, three years of only raising a .2 mil. So I'm not 100% sure. I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but Linda could probably answer that better. She's a tax collector. She's the one that provides a lot of that information. But we are still one of the lowest in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you.
Michelle Was, I have a question about the Board of Ed budget. Have we heard from them that they have any additional expenses for COVID-19 that they're anticipating, like we heard from the Board of Selectmen?
I think that would be for Megan.
Okay, let me unmute Megan.
I didn't want to chime in until somebody, you know, said it was okay. I have Janice Thurlow and Victor Toth are also on the Zoom, so they can, if you allow it, they can certainly pipe in as well. Yes, we certainly do have different expenses based on COVID-19. Our school system has been just about turned upside down in the past month. And while we thought we, there are places that we could have significant savings based on the governor's executive orders, which this Board of Finance is also operating under, we're operating under them as well. And I guess a good example of that would have been our transportation costs. So I can defer to Janice for the real specifics, but in general, we are required to pay some of those costs. We can't just not pay DOTCO. I know that we have also done the best we possibly can as far as piecemealing education to our students remotely. While we have been fortunate to have various older Chromebooks and iPads that we've been able to disperse to our students, they are not all on the same programs. They are not all on the same, I guess, capabilities. So we, if, things will look different in the fall. I guess it's not really if. We don't know exactly what it will look like. But we must have a more uniform process to be able to properly educate these children and to, I guess, implement our curriculum, which may also have to change based on distance learning. So while it might look like the schools, you know, the buildings are closed, therefore we've got a ton of savings. We have new expenses as well. If you would like to have real specifics, I would prefer to defer to Victor and Janice for some of that. So you just let me know if that would be appropriate.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
Yeah, I do. Karen, I want to, Dave Forton here. Karen, explain to us all so we understand it. If I just take last year's budget and I multiply it by 2%, I come up with $480,307. But you just talked about 600 and how much? $1,000 would have to be taken out of the unassigned general fund to fund this budget.
Correct. So basically, Dave, what I did is, you, you had stated you that the combined budget would be $24,495,725.
Which is, which is an increase of 2% over the existing budget.
So we still have a shortfall of a specific amount of money.
Of revenue.
Yes.
Yep.
So if you don't raise the mill rate by that .2, that leaves a higher shortfall.
Yeah. I'm asking my question for everybody else who might be here. So.
I'm going by the current shortfall of, I guess I'm going by the 1,076,987, so I apologize. I got a lot of numbers going here, so if you could just be with me for a minute. So $24,495,725, I could be taking into consideration dropping down to that level that you're allowing us to only go 2% over. So the difference that I came up with was the 616,085, but I just need a few minutes to recalculate some of the numbers, and then I can give you the specifics.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
While she's doing that, I have a question to Jay.
Go ahead.
Looking at the BOS budget, I noticed you actually have like a 5.6% reduction in the election budget. And given the fact that the primary for this year was moved from April out of this fiscal year to next fiscal year, and the Secretary of State is talking about trying to encourage mail-in ballots, is that a wise move, or do you think you need additional monies in the election budget, not a reduction in the election budget?
Actually, things have changed since that budget was created. And answering your question, yes, I know we are going to need an increase. Before any of you ask how much, I can't tell you. We've had weekly meetings with the Secretary of State and with the registrars here in town hall, and Secretary of State is attempting to assist the towns in meeting the needs for both the primary and the general election. We are looking at our options, but yes, I agree with you, Fred. We are going to need additional funds for that, but I can't tell you how much.
Okay, so you're planning, given the factor, the proposal is to reduce the overall BOS budget, you're going to have to transfer monies from somewhere else, obviously?
Yes. But again, I can't tell you how much, and I can't tell you where, but I can tell you that there will be an increase.
Thank you.
We're going to have to look at, take money from a variety of budgets to fund those needs. And I, again, I can't tell you which ones. It's just, we know it's an issue. And as you might be aware, it literally came up overnight just in the last, you know, couple of weeks.
Mike Doherty, if I could just say one more thing regarding the possible reduction in the funding for the school board?
All right, can I hear you?
Mike, this is Megan. If I could make some, one more comment just to put a little bit in perspective what such a reduction in funding for the schools would mean?
Now, it all depends on what we end up with for a final decision here on budget.
Certainly, but I can let you know that reducing it by possibly $400,000 for our request would essentially be funding the Woodstock Academy tuition and nothing for pre-K to 8. And we also remember, we need technology for next year if we're going to be able to continue to educate these kids. We're not, teachers still need to teach. Parents still need to teach. We still have special education. We still have things that we need to do as an education system.
I understand that, but based, based on where we are right now, that's what, we're here to make that decision, what we want to go to for a spending.
Just want to make you guys aware of what happens. Also to Mr. Forton's point regarding that should the public schools require additional funding if you do not go to the max of Proposition 46? If it's possible, I'd like to know that dollar amount, because there's a really good chance. If it's possible, I'd like to know that dollar amount, because there's a really good chance that we might possibly have to ask for it.
I could, I could answer that, Mike, if you want.
Go ahead.
Important here. All we could do is go to the maximum of Prop 46. What we're, what we're looking at here is we're looking at a budget from a board who's going to make a budget without input from the community. If it turned out that the necessity was there, that other things had to happen, special appropriation could be requested. It could be granted or, or forwarded by the Board of Finance, and it would go before the voters at a referendum. In which case, they would have the opportunity to weigh in, but the total amount would not be greater than the amount allowed by Prop 46.
Thank you, Dave. I certainly understand the process. I was actually asking for that difference in what the dollar amount would be.
Uh, the, the difference, I, I can talk to you, certainly.
Go ahead.
Karen Fitzpatrick, treasurer. So, so based on the numbers that Dave is providing, we are allowed to spend $941,210,000 under Prop 46. If we only go 2%, that's 48308,000, that leaves a balance of $460,902,000.
Thank you, Karen.
Welcome. Um, Dave Fortin, um, as of, you know, you had asked me about the numbers. So basically, uh, going by your numbers, fiscal year 1920, we had a budget of $24,15417,000. If you want to allow an increase of $480,308,000, that's a total government budget of $24,495,725,000. We only have $23,879,640 in estimated revenues. It leaves a shortfall of $616,850,000. That would need to come either from the general fund, or you can offset some of that by increasing a mill or not, but that would be the shortfall.
I, I agree. I agree. I just did it too. 616,085,000.
Yep.
Again, Yang, feel free to, to suggest something else. It's just a proposal.
Anyone else?
Well, I have a slightly different proposal. Uh, just going through the numbers, uh, I was thinking that we would reduce the allowable by 1/3, which would give us a total of, uh, $627,500,000. And if in fact, we did that, uh, we would still give the Board of Ed, uh, 90% and the, uh, town 10%. But if we go that route, uh, because it's going to be a larger amount, I would think we would probably need to raise the, uh, mill rate by at least, uh, .25. Your thoughts on that?
What was your number, Mike? Your, uh, total increase number?
Total number would be an increase of, uh, 627,500,000.
Yeah, so 2.53 something mills.
That would give you a budget of, uh, $24,642,917,000.
So we have, Dave Fortin here, so we have this careful balance. I don't think there's anybody here who really wants to strangle the schools. I think we all understand that to some degree, um, we have a bill in the, um, we have a bill in the academy we're going to have to pay after, at some, in some point. And that we're in unusual circumstances in the country right now. We have to find some sort of careful balance here. And, and that's what I'm proposing. And let's not lose sight of the fact that after we make this change, we got to go back to taxpayers, add a referendum, and ask them for $218,000, on top of whatever we ask for now. Now, that's not to say that my 2%, or Mike's 2.5%, which one's better than the other? I just want to make sure that everything lands on the table for consideration. Passionately speaking, I wish I could go to the max of 46. I wish we could pay it. I just don't see it as, as a reasonable alternative this year. As I said, I, I've certainly supported that in the past.
Yes, I may. Bradrick?
Yes, I, I understand that, uh, Megan Bart is suggested that this is going to all come out of K through eight. I think it's really between the Board of Ed and the academy to do some negotiations rather than rolling over and saying, yes, yes, uh, take it all, it's okay. Our children can suffer. The academy tends to ask, and everyone says, yes, ma'am. I, I think there needs to be a wee bit of negotiation there, and if it's not happening, uh, that really is not an issue that the taxpayers have to deal with.
To Mr. Broderick, I just want to make sure you realize, and I believe we have had this discussion prior. We have a contract with Woodstock Academy that does not expire until June of 2021. That contract cannot start to be renegotiated until December of this year. So at present, we are living under that contract. I am sure the contract will look different once we are able to renegotiate it, but now this is what we have.
I'm an attorney. I'm a recovering attorney. Uh, I have dealt with contracts that have issues during their legally binding term. And when two people come to an agreement on paper, you can always manage to find a rational and reasonable resolution. If you're simply looking at the piece of paper and saying, we can't do anything, I don't think that's.
Bradrick? Could you speak up a little or adjust your mic there?
I, I'm going to try. My, my mic is at full volume. Uh, I'll repeat, I will repeat myself. I'll repeat myself. I'm saying that even though there's a piece of paper that says X, Y, and Z, two reasonable people cannot, uh, depend on that. I think it can be renegotiated, given the unusual circumstances, rather than simply relying on it. And, uh, to simply roll over and die is not the right answer.
Thank you for, Mr. Broderick. I appreciate it. And I certainly understand relying on attorneys during this point, which is, I believe, why we relied on the municipal, the general government attorney last year, as well as the school board's attorney last year. When we looked at the possibilities of addressing this, I believe both of the attorneys, um, agreed that you, we live within the contract that is it currently is, and renegotiate for the future. But I certainly understand your frustration. We're feeling it as well. That's why we look to improve it the next time around.
Anyone else? No one else has any thoughts?
I like your numbers better, Michael. This is Bernardi.
Again, Michael?
That, that at least gives the Board of Ed another $130,000, and the town another, you know, almost, almost $15,000 or so. Just, just my thoughts.
So you, in other words?
This is Michelle Waz.
The numbers that I mentioned. Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, Michael. I didn't get that. What?
So you are saying that you're in favor of the numbers that I mentioned?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Go ahead.
Like, this is, this is Michelle Waz. I, I agree with your numbers and Mike's too, mostly because I am concerned that there is going to be , um, unexpected costs that, that aren't going to be covered, and we're going to be back having this discussion in the fall again. And so I think it strikes a better balance, um, for the needs of, of the, you know, the Board of Ed and keeping taxpayers in mind.
Strikes a better balance, yes.
Michael, is you, you haven't really laid out what your plan is. Is that taking the entire balance out of the unreserved general fund?
No. Uh, with the numbers that I, that I was giving, I, I was, uh, projecting with that, uh, .25 mill increase, and that would leave us, uh, $585,365,000 that would come from the general fund.
And Mike Doherty, does that include the, uh, because we're, it's still dangling out there, the, uh, the capital assessment from the academy?
No, no, that, that is separate. It's on the, two separate budgets. There's capital non-recurring, which is where that would come from.
Yep.
And then there is the general government reserve.
No, I, I just want to make sure I, I have everything straight. That's all.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Let's just, I guess I just want to remind everybody that what, we can certainly do a special appropriation later, after everybody makes every attempt to live within these means. We can hold back now, and we can get citizen participation later.
Did that, a question today. Um, what do you mean by a special appropriation later from, from the reserves?
It, it probably would have to come from the reserves, Fred, because we wouldn't be able to raise the, the mill rate at that point. But if it turned out that we weren't able to tighten our belts to the amount that we needed to, all the different, all the headspace between the amount that we approve now and the maximum of 46, any of that amount could be appropriated later. And if it was appropriated later and greater than $100,000, and the taxpayers in the community would be able to weigh in. So it's not like we're saying, yes, we're only going to give you, you know, my number was, is roughly a little less than 500,000. We're only going to give you 500,000 out of 940 that you're allowed, but it doesn't mean that that's, we can't do more later if it was required or necessary.
Either of these appropriate amounts that are less than the requested requires both of these boards to come back with new modified proposals to us.
Not a special appropriation. It could just be the.
No, no, I'm not talking about the special. I'm talking about those reductions. They, their budgets don't show those, so we would need a budget that reflects those reductions.
I don't think we do. We're here to, tonight, tonight, this, this meeting was set by the, the governor and the Board of Selectmen for us to set a mill rate. And I'm not even talking about setting a mill rate at this point. We're talking about approving a budget. In fact, I think that's the agenda item we're under.
I agree. The, the executive order and the Board of Selectmen authorize us to do it, but they didn't say they have to be done on May 5th.
I agree. I would be happy to postpone this whole thing into June.
Well.
But I'm here tonight, and I, and I did some homework, and I made a proposal. And I'm saying that none of this is, is carved in stone, other than what we prove right now will be the starting point of the budget. That'll be the budget that's approved. And if that budget doesn't, can't make it, we'll have to do what every other town, all 168 other towns do when they can't make it. They go back to the Board of Finance and they ask for a special appropriation, which comes out of their reserves.
Uh, basically, basically, this is a two-part process. And, and the part that we have to decide right now is what we're willing to spend. Once we decide that we're going with Dave's idea, my idea, uh, the limit of Prop 46 or a zero increase, once we decide that, then we will decide how we're going to pay for it, what the mill rate's going to be, what's going to come from the general fund.
I'm not certain.
Bradrick?
I'm not certain we have to. Um, what happens if this was tabled to June?
What happens in June?
I, to be honest with you, I don't think the, by June, I don't think the number's going to change, and I don't really think things are going to get better. The governor's already canceled school for the remainder of this, this school year. Uh, and it, it, it's nice to, to hope for the best, but I find it's better to, uh, plan for the worst and hope for the best. And I think that's kind of where we are right now. And, uh, that's why I think we should come to some decision at this time for a reasonable budget that both the town and the Board of Education can find a way to live with. And then we will decide how we're going to pay for it. Uh, as far as increasing the mill rate, uh, whether we go 2/10 of a mill, uh, .25 mills, 3/10 of a mill, the thing is, one way or another, it's going to cost us. If it doesn't cost us this year, it's going to cost us next year. If we don't raise the mill rate slightly this year, we're going to end up paying two or three times that much more next year.
Michelle?
Nope. I'm, I'm just nodding my head in agreement with you. That's all. I know everything's there. I was just saying, if we, if we wait till June, how are we supposed to collect our taxes? That's another thing. You know, I mean, when do we send our tax bills out? How does that impact that process?
Karen Fitzpatrick, treasurer. Is Linda, Linda available? Linda Bernardi?
He, he left the room. I don't know where she went. Downstairs somewhere.
I know that speaking with Linda, the more we come, I, I don't want to speak for her, but speaking with her, um, she has made mention that the, the further we delay the process of passing a budget, the harder it's going to be for her to make the requirements to get the, um, the bills paid, I'm sorry, the bills processed in order for her to send them out in time. There's a, there's not just setting a mill rate, and then we send bills out. She has to, everything has to go through the assessor's office, then it goes to Linda, and then we still have to also find somewhere in here where the, um, the abatements for the dairy farms that has to also get approved by the Board of Selectmen, and then another meeting with the Board of Finance, and then those also have to get entered in her system and show on the tax bills. So the longer we delay this process, the harder and longer it's going to be for Linda to be able to get those tax bills prepared for July 1st. Um, and then the other thing that you should all be aware of is that we had, under another executive order, we have deferred taxes until October 1st with no penalties and interest. So, you know, that's another consideration of, um, you know, depending on what, if we increase the mill rate of the funding that's going to be able to come through for the first three months, we may have to dip into the general fund to cover those costs as well if people defer it till October. You know, there's several factors with this budget that makes it really tough this year. We have a lot of factors to consider. I don't think any one of us know the real right answer. We're all just kind of doing the best we can. I agree, it's a bad time for people that are out of work, um, and, and suffering. I, I know there's a lot of help out there for those people. You know, we're trying to get help as a town, possibly getting some fee or reimbursements. I know the school may be getting some reimbursements at some point, but we just don't know when those funds will be available. So the more we dip into the general fund, the harder it's going to hit us later on, because the more we keep dipping in now, we're going to have less reserves for next year, which I too agree. We don't know what this upcoming fiscal year is going to be. I think we need to budget. Focusing on that thing will somewhat get normal in the new fiscal year, and then if they don't, we have to come back and figure out how, how to move forward. Um, it, it's a really hard decision right now to make. I understand what you're, the pressure that you're under. But I think that one of the responsible things we need to do for the town is think of the best interest for the town as a whole. And constantly dipping into that general fund is not the answer. We have to come up with some kind of a, an increase that is swallowable for most people. That's, that's not going to hurt the pocket, but still give us some of the funding we need to move forward.
Anyone else? Would anyone care to make a motion on the budget?
Michael, could you, Michael Doherty, could you repeat your proposal again?
My proposal would be for a total budget of $24,642,917,000. My proposal would be for a total budget of twenty-four million, six hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. And out of that, we would give the, what did I just have the numbers here? We would give the Board of Education would receive six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars additional. Yeah.
They would get.
Excuse me, the the board of ed would get five hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And the town would get sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And that would be a total increase of six hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
I make a motion that we set the budget at the proposal that Michael Dougherty has has presented, using the figures that the chairman has presented, I would make a motion.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Bernardi. Second, Shamora.
Ninety seconds, any discussion?
Could you repeat the, not the total amount, Mike, but what happened, where the cuts are going to, how much cut there is to the board of ed budget and how much cut there is to the board of selectmen's proposed budgets?
Brad, couldn't hear you.
Could you, could you repeat again what the reductions are to the proposed board of ed budget and the proposed board of selectmen budget?
I I can tell you, I have the numbers in front of me, what they would receive for that amount, but I can't tell you what the cut would be, I don't have that number.
Okay, could you repeat then how much they're going to receive in total?
All right, the board of education would receive an additional five hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which would give them a budget of nineteen million, two hundred five thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
And the B O S?
And the the general government would get sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars over last year's budget, which would give them a total of five million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars. That's five million, four, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-six, for a total of twenty-four million, six forty-two, nine seventeen. The overall increase would be two point six one percent. The increase for the board of education would be three point oh three percent. And the increase for the town government would be one point one seven percent.
Fred, the dollar amount reduction to the board of education funding would be slightly more than two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I already seconded it.
Okay, second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. We will vote. Mr. Fortin?
Yay.
Is that a nay?
That's a nay.
Okay, Mr. Bernardi?
Aye.
Mr. Bradrick?
Opposed.
I didn't hear that.
Opposed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shamora?
Aye, four.
All right, Mr. Kelleher?
Aye.
And Mr. Dougherty is in favor. So, I guess that passes.
So what's the total, Michael?
The total would be twenty-four million,
Yep.
six hundred forty-two thousand,
Got it.
nine hundred seventeen.
Yep, and ninety-ten split?
Ninety-ten split, yeah, and that would leave the board of education with nineteen million, two hundred five thousand, two hundred fifty-one.
Got it, board of ed, uh, board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen, five million, four, thirty-seven thousand, six, sixty-six.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, all right. So that's what we're at with the budget, the next item would be to approve the five-year capital plan for the for the general government and the board of education. Now, we have a board of education, total five-year capital plan of one million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, and a five-year capital plan for the general government of nine million, two hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that would be a combined total of ten million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Shamora.
But Shamora, move, motion, we have a second?
Second, Bernardi.
Mr. Bernardi, seconds. Do we have any discussion?
If I may, once again, I note the capital plan for the board of ed addresses the Woodstock Academy expense, which is periodic and will be ongoing periodic and does not belong as a capital expense.
Well, that's something we're going to have to address in the future, next year, starting next year. But as of this year, we had, we had already agreed that we were going to pay them the initial, I don't remember the exact total, but we were going to pay them in two annual equal payments for the first project that they did, that was one project that was completed, and according to the auditors and the town attorney, they were legal. One project, one-time deal, so it's not a recurring item. That project is done, now, as I say, going forward, and this is something that's going to have to be addressed when the board of education deals with the academy for their contract going forward, is how this is going to be handled. But for this year, it was already planned ahead of time that we were going to make the two payments, one last year, one this year.
I would agree with you, to the extent that there was two payments, but they increased the amount of payment this year. So I'm not certain that we can validate this year's payment based on last year's.
Well, it's my opinion that we will approve, when the time comes to send them the check, we will approve exactly the same amount we paid them last year, because that is exactly how the bill was written. Anyone else? All right, so take a vote on the combined capital projects in the amount of ten million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars. Mr. Fortin?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardi?
Aye.
Mr. Bradrick?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay, Mr. Shamora?
Aye.
Mr. Kelleher?
Aye.
And Mr. Dougherty, both aye. All right, so that takes care of that. All right, the next order of business would be to set a mill rate. Again, as I say, if we were to, we have a shortfall now of
Seven.
Seven, seven hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So.
Michael, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes. The shortfall in the budget will be seven hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars. Earlier, I I recommended that, I I don't, I really don't want a mill increase, but I recommend that we do something, because otherwise it's going to come back to bite us later. So, I I would recommend a point two-five mil that would generate a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars, which would leave us a shortfall of five hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars to come from the general fund. Anybody's thoughts?
Charlene Cutler, that does not include the capital payments to the academy, correct?
No, it does not.
Thank you.
What was the mill rate increase again, Mike?
That would be point two-five mils, Brad.
Point two-five, thank you.
Which would amount to approximately a one percent increase in people's taxes, so if in fact you paid five thousand dollars in taxes last year, it would cost you another fifty dollars this year. So, I mean, it's it's, I I hate to raise the taxes at all, but again, as I said, if we don't start now, next year I think is going to really hurt us. We could end up raising it two or three times that amount. And we know that the taxpayers are not, are not too keen on going much more than a point five mil, we have had larger mill rate increases and if you put a gun to their head, you can probably get three-quarters of a mil out of them, but we're not going to get a mil or a one-point-five mil increase, so as I say, I think it's, I think it's wise to take some of it this year, and this way here, we also don't, don't drain our reserve by that hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars, and that will be there next year if we get hit hard and we have to do another big draw on that. And that's just my opinion. Anyone else?
If I may, people are hurting. This is not the year. I I think we've overtaxed, if you would, the populace for the past several years, we have a decent undesignated surplus, and now is the time to use it. We can revisit this next year, once things settle down, but no tax increase is acceptable to the people I've talked to.
All right, anyone else? All right, so we have a seven hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollar deficit. Would someone care to make a motion as to how we pay for it?
I will move that the shortfall be funded one hundred percent from undesignated reserve.
All right, do we have a second?
Well, I'll second that, let's get it up on the table, David Fortin.
All right, we have a motion to hold the mill rate flat at twenty-four point five mils and take the shortfall in its entirety from the general fund reserve. And we have a second on that motion, do we have any further discussion?
I'd like to ask Karen where that would leave our undesignated reserve, if we were to do that.
Currently, it would, you know, base, Karen Fitzpatrick, I'm sorry, treasurer. So basically, as of June thirtieth of nineteen, our fund balance was three point nine, or approximately three point nine million. If we take that amount of money out without getting, I can't really tell what we're going to come in at for this fiscal year, I gave you a best guesstimate that we may be three hundred and, sorry. We might, we may be receiving approximately three hundred and ninety-five thousand in a surplus, that's just a guesstimate, it's not actual, could be more or less. And that still leaves us that deficit there, so, I mean, based based on that, I think it's definitely going to drastically reduce our general fund, but I can't really tell you by how much at this point, because we really don't know what's going to be our final numbers at the end of June. Kind of hard to tell. You know, there's there's several factors that come into play when they're when they're talking about that, but if we if we don't get a surplus, you're probably talking, you know, three million, three point two million that we'll have left as a balance.
And as a percentage of the, as a percentage of the yearly budget, where would that leave us?
Three point two million dollars would be thirteen point three percent.
He was faster than me this time.
And and so the the thirteen percent figure is not assuming any revenues going back, or unspent revenues going back into the fund, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So it could conceivably, if we took the entire shortfall out of that, we could still end up, if the money comes in, and we keep our fingers crossed, around fourteen percent, is that fair, or am I close?
That's correct as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, we will vote on the motion to absorb the seven hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollar difference in the approved budget from the general fund. Mr. Fortin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Bernardi, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Bradrick?
Aye.
Mr. Shamora?
Aye.
Mr. Kelleher?
Aye.
And Mr. Dougherty also votes aye. So Carrie? All right. That takes care of the business, except for, other from the board.
Charlene Cutler, I just wanted to mention something, for years I worked for a nonprofit that had a grant program. And we found out very early in the process that an applicant would throw everything, including the kitchen sink, into the expenses for a project to try to get as much as they possibly could for their grant. We instituted a policy that said that the grant funds could only be used for funding the direct costs of the project. And I wonder if it would make sense and be helpful if the board of finance had a policy that said that municipal funds if the board of finance had a policy that said that municipal funds could only be used to pay for direct costs. Um, I don't know how many kinds of expenditures would fall into that and, and need to be reconsidered, but I wonder if there isn't a way of not paying for additional expenses for the academy. Anyway, just a thought for some other future discussion.
Anyone else? No one? Alright, well, move on to correspondence and announcements. Uh, the only thing that I have to announce right now is that, as of this time, our next scheduled meeting will be June the 12th. Uh, 7:00 PM. Hopefully we don't have to do it this way again, we can all sit in a room together, but we shall see.
Mike, did you say June the 12th?
Pardon me? Uh, the 11th, okay, well, I don't, I looked at
Yeah, 'cause the 12th, this is a Friday, so.
My sheet says June 12th.
I have June 9th.
June 9th, there's a second Tuesday in June.
Okay, well, the next meeting will be June 9th. I wanted it to be the 12th.
Thank you.
But it will be the 9th. Thank you for your correction. Picking up on that. Uh, if there's nothing else, then, uh, adjournments in order.
Who's adjourned?
Dave Forten. Mr. Forten moves to adjourn, Mr. Bernardi seconds, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Guys, have a good night, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Safe, healthy.
Thank you, Michael.
Night, Mike.
Night, thank you, and thank you Crystal and Eric, everybody for the, uh, smooth meeting.
Thank you.